September 12th, 2018 is called to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please note the role?
Chairman Bray is here. Commissioner Kish is here. Commissioner Maloney is here. Commissioner Walters is here. Commissioner Steiner is here. Vice Chairman Barnes is absent. And Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Keys is absent. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And with that, can I get a motion to excuse both Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Keys from this evening's meeting, please?
So moved.
A second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Kish to excuse Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Keys. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion carries. The minutes have been provided in your packets, and I would ask you that you review the minutes from August 8th, 2018. And once you do so, I will gladly take a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the August 8th minutes.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to approve the August 8th, 2018 minutes. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, at this point in time, this is public comments. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards? Anyone on any non-agenda items at this time? Okay. Item number six is disclosure of ex parte communication. This is the opportunity for commissioners to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting. Any from the commissioners this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is old business, and at this time, we have none. We are going to move into item number eight, new business, and we'll start with 8.1, which I will open the public hearing for the Rainbow Valley Final Planned Area Development Rezone, and Karen will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, Commissioners. The first part of my presentation is to explain that I messed up on the notification postcards to the surrounding property owners. I didn't get them out in the time required by the zoning ordinance. The second part of my presentation is to request that you continue this public hearing to Tuesday, September 25th at 6:00 P.M. And the final part of my presentation is to express my gratitude for you doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for that. And so with that, I will take a motion on 8.1 to continue it at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue item 8.1 to September 25th, 2018.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to continue this item until the September 25th, 2018 meeting at 6:00 P.M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. 8.2, I will open the public hearing on the El Cidro Final PAD Amendment to modify the rear and side setbacks and maximum lot coverage. With that, I will turn it over to Karen for present.
Thank you. The El Cidro PAD extends from Lower Buckeye Road on the north to just south of MC-85 on the south, and from just east of Cotton Lane on the east to Citrus Road on the west. This is probably very familiar to you. Just a few months ago, you recommended approval of a PAD Amendment for Beazer Homes to reduce the rear yard setback in a portion of parcel 1D. This amendment tonight is for the remainder of the residential parcels, LDR-1, LDR-2, and LDR-3. It's property that still is owned by BET. And they are proposing to modify the development standards in those land use categories. And as a correction, in my staff report, I said the changes would be to LDR-1 and 3. LDR-2 should be included as well. And this is just a lotting exhibit for the El Cidro PAD. These are the red lines for the changes that are going to be made. In the LDR-1 category, they are requesting the side setback be modified from 5 and 10 feet to 5 and 5 feet, and then a corresponding change in the maximum lot coverage. In LDR-2, they are requesting the rear yard setback reduction to 18 feet. And then in LDR-3, they are requesting a change, again, from 20 feet to 18 feet in the rear yard setback. The 5-foot and 10-foot reduced to 5 and 5 in the side yard setbacks, and again, a corresponding change in the maximum lot coverage. This is an exhibit that we showed you previously. It shows you the reduction from 20 feet to 18 feet in the rear yard is pretty inconsequential. However, the reduction to 5 and 5 side yard setbacks, we were a bit concerned about that because you end up with houses 10 feet apart. But El Cidro and BET agreed to this enhanced landscape package to kind of soften the canyon effect that may occur when you have the two homes 10 feet apart. And this would have been the standard package. But as you can see with the extra trees in there, it will really help to soften the appearance from the streetscape. And this is simply the final development standards for the residential categories in El Cidro, and this is what will appear in the PAD document. And the last thing that we are doing, because this is, I believe, the Seventh Amendment of the PAD, we are consolidating all the stipulations for El Cidro. We had many stipulations from the original PAD approval in 2007. And then with the six subsequent amendments, we had so many stipulations. And every time you reviewed something within the PAD, you were looking at seven different ordinances to get the requirements. So we have consolidated the stipulations by deleting repeat stipulations. We brought STIPS into conformance with a recent development agreement that was done on the property. And we also brought the STIPS into conformance with current engineering standards and zoning code requirements. So now we have one PAD and one set of stipulations for that PAD. So it's a great thing for staff. It's a great thing for the property owner. And it's a great thing for future home builders. So we are recommending approval of the PAD Amendment and ask that the commission do so as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Walters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, the enhanced landscape package image that you showed us, do you have that from a street view?
We do not, no.
Thank you.
Karen, correct me if I'm wrong. With the 5-foot and 5-foot, do we now have an enhanced fire-resistant package on these homes since they're closer together?
There really isn't an issue in terms of fire code protection. If there is any sort of overhang into the area in between the homes, it can only be a minimum distance so it doesn't affect the fire code. In terms of eaves, I mean roof eaves into the distance between the two homes.
Thank you.
If I have only one concern, and that would be that these homes would seem very crowded together. And this might just make the appearance of these homes to be cheaper and less attractive to potential buyers. And we've seen homes in the past clustered together very closely, and it has a negative effect on the area. So that's my only concern. Not really a question, but just, I don't know if there are other homes in the area with similar setbacks or similar changes that have done well. But yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can tell you, Commissioner Kish, that this is a standard request that we are getting from home builders and developers that they are finding that in the current market today, homeowners just don't want the land area that they have to maintain around the homes, the yard area that they want to maintain. So, you know, it seems to be what people are buying, regardless of how close the homes are. But we, as you mentioned, we were concerned about appearance. So we thought that this enhanced landscape package would do a lot to make up for any negative effect the closeness of the homes may have on the appearance of the streetscape.
Is this going to be a movement going forward for other developers going into the future with smaller setbacks on the side of the homes?
Yes, I think it will continue. And we, in fact, as a department, did a recent amendment to our zoning ordinance where we allowed these things to occur, different changes and setbacks to occur. And then there needed to be amenities and enhancements that were provided in order to obtain that right, to have those reductions. And we thought this fit in well with what we had in mind in terms of enhancements.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? No. I assume the applicant is here. Would you like to address the commission, or are you okay?
I'm actually okay. I think Karen did a professional job. I'm happy to see you too.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Oh. Commissioner Walters? Just your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Scott Moore, Executive Vice President, BET Investments, property owner of 5506 East San Miguel Avenue, Paradise Valley, Arizona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Warner, the same question that I had for Karen Craver. Do you have a street view image of the enhanced landscape package?
We have not put one together. But if you would like me to provide one later on, I suppose we could have one put in your packet. But I don't have any. I didn't have one drawn up for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. If there are, at this, no speaker cards on this, correct? And so I will close the public hearing. And with that, I will ask the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve case number 18-210-00002.
Is there a second?
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve the El Cidro Final PAD Amendment, With that, is there any discussion?
No.
Yes, Commissioner Walters has some discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to do this on every agenda item. However, I agree with my colleague in the concern. And I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with this without seeing what this looks like from the street. The reason is that, I mean, it looks nice and full, but you're looking at the tree from the top. And I think it's important to consider what this really would look like from a street perspective, and whether the enhancement is sufficient to address those concerns.
Is there any other discussion at this point in time? With that, see if I can maybe bridge a gap here a little bit. Either Karen or maybe even Chris, is there something maybe you can help with? Commissioner Walters, explain where we normally are and where we're headed as far as a landscape package? I know we don't have a visual one, but numbers or sizes or something of that nature. And I know that's not really our...
I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the question. I would defer that to Mr. Moore, since it's his project, and he's working with the builders in order to, you know, implement the illustration and the standards of this enhanced landscape package. So I would ask Mr. Moore to address that.
Please, Mr. Moore, I would like to see if we can't ease Commissioner Walters' and Commissioner Kish's concerns, or at least explain what the enhancement is, even though we may not have a visual picture from the street.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, our chair and Commissioners. I actually would have provided that if it would have come up. I'm just, I apologize that it didn't come up, that we show a streetscape. We went round and round on how to present this and how to try to do a visual that would help explain it. But the idea is to take and add additional trees to each corner of the properties that would soften the reduced side setback, which, by the way, is a standard in the city of Goodyear. So this is a PAD. It's a 14-year-old PAD. We've been working with the city of Goodyear on it from the very beginning, including the 303 right-of-way that went through the middle of the property. And then there was a condemnation case that went through from McFlood Channel and others. So we've had different variations. The idea is to come through with the side setback and to have more options in product itself. So we'll have more front porches. We'll have the ability to go put in side-turn garages and some of the lots as well, which we've had to do. There's, within our stipulations, it states that there's going to be a lot more diversity with this reduced setback. And it does meet, without even going through a PAD amendment, it does meet the standard of the zoning for that size lot.
Commissioner Walters, does that kind of help?
It does, thank you. And I think I called you Mr. Warner earlier. Was it Mr. Moore?
Moore.
Moore, I apologize.
Any other discussion at this time? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
It doesn't.
And there was three ayes.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That is, yeah, that is the majority. Sorry, Commissioner Walters.
Oh, my apologies.
We will move on to item 8.3. And I will open the public hearing on the rezoning from agricultural urban to light industrial. And Steve will be presenting on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. Tonight, we have a rezoning. This is the property here, about 2.28 acres on the west side of Bullard, halfway between Yuma and Van Buren. Pretty much surrounding the property right now, it's pretty much all agricultural development. Looking a little farther out, we have the Goodyear Municipal Complex. That's our location right here. Wrapping around Van Buren, we've got the Bullard Wash here, residential development within Centerra. Heading to the south, we've got Goodyear-Phoenix Airport, future industrial development down here. And then wrapping up here, 143rd, we've got those large industrial boxes going in, Chewy and Michael Lewis. This is the land use plan out of the general plan. And here's our location right about here. As you could see before in the aerial, most of it is currently farmland. But the general plan calls out this Bullard corridor right here for business and commerce uses. And it is what you'd expect the uses in this land use. Retail, service, light industrial uses are what's considered appropriate in the business and commerce land use. And this is the zoning, current zoning for the area. Here's the property right here, west side of Bullard. You can see a lot of it's still zoned agricultural urban, AU, right here across the street. We've got some I-1 zoning right here. And then we've got PAD residential here, the airport. And the request tonight is to rezone from that agricultural urban to an I-1 light industrial. And the purpose of the rezoning is for the future construction of an APS substation. APS has identified a growing need for service in this area, and thus the rezoning request. Within the I-1, the light industrial zoning, the proposed zoning tonight, an electrical substation is a permitted use. So once the rezoning takes place, then the applicant can come in with site planning for the electrical substation. And this is the proposed site plan for the substation. We have the 10-foot wall, typical substation development that we see throughout the city, the 10-foot wall surrounding it, all the equipment inside, a couple entrances off of Bullard that really are only used for the times that they need to service the equipment. And the typical landscape plan at APS will provide, they'll provide trees and shrubs and landscaping along the Bullard frontage to soften the appearance of the equipment and the wall. Because this is a rezoning request, we did have to follow our citizen review process and all our public hearing notice requirements. Staff did notice this project as required by our city code. To date, staff has not received any public inquiries on this rezoning request. We do find it, the rezoning, consistent with the general plan, that it will be compatible with the area, with the future industrial and business commerce-type uses in the area. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the three stipulations noted in the draft of ordinance, 2018-1407. With that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my presentation. Staff and, I believe the applicant is here. We're available for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any questions for staff at this time?
No.
Thank you. You said the applicant is here. Do you wish, does the applicant wish to address the commission? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the engineer of the project? Perfect. With that, thank you, Steve. Is there any speakers cards on this? Anyone from the public like to address the commission? Okay. I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of case number 18-200-00008.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve the rezoning from agricultural urban to light industrial, case number 18-200-00008. And with that, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. We will go on to 8.4, and I will open the public hearing for the Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Phase 2. Jen, item 8.4, and Alex will present on this.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I got my items confused. All right. So this request is for a rezon to approximately 30 acres from agricultural to planned area development to create the Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Final, oops, Mixed Use Phase 2 Final PAD. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of McDowell and 159th Avenue. To the north is Palm Valley Phase 8, which I realized after it was too late that in the aerial photo in your packet, I labeled Pebble Creek Phase 8. So that is incorrect, and I apologize. But within Palm Valley Phase 8, we have existing single-family residential and luxe apartments, which I believe now is called the Max 159. To the east is an existing Pebble Creek Marketplace PAD, which is zoned for general commercial. This is the future Wincos site. And along Pebble Creek is the future Circle K and Panera locations that you've recently seen. To the south is Interstate 10. And then that carved-out area, which, the mouse worked, you can see that little carve-out, that is a dot property for retention. To the east is currently vacant land zone for future commercial uses. And this request includes approximately 17 acres of multifamily use within the PAD and about 13 acres of general commercial property. So these are the development standards included in the PAD. So for the area zoned for commercial, the city's C2 general commercial will apply. It just directly sends them to the city zoning ordinance. One of the main reasons for the need of a PAD zoning was to deviate from the city's multifamily standards. So on the right table, we can see what those deviations are compared to the MF-18 standards. For maximum building height, it's set at 45, so a 5-foot increase from what the city has. The rear yard setback, which is currently set at 20% of the lot depth, is proposed to be 35 feet. And the street-side setback, which is typically 30, is proposed for 25. The general plan designates this property in the transit-oriented development overlay, which allows for increases in densities and intensities, which includes varied heights and setbacks. Therefore, we find that the PAD request is meeting the requirements of the general plan and is a valid request. The stipulation of approval was, is being recommended to set the minimum number of dwelling units at 204. This is intentional to maintain a higher density to further those general plan standards. That way, if the developer were to sell the property, that higher density will remain on the site. Additionally, a noise study was required for this project due to the adjacency to Interstate 10. And a stipulation has been included to comply with the recommendations of that study for noise mitigation. This is a conceptual site plan for the property. On the west side, you can see the apartment complex. And on the east, we can see commercial development that ultimately connects to the Wincos property. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 12th. The applicant and staff were available for questions. However, no one attended this meeting. I believe the applicant received one general inquiry, but to date, the staff, or to date, staff nor the applicant have received any opposition or additional inquiries. As stated in the staff report, staff finds the rezoning in compliance with the city's standards and recommends approval subject to the stipulations included in the draft ordinance. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and available for questions, and I can answer any questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any questions for staff at this time? You said the applicant was here? You don't have, if you're good, you don't have to come up.
I'm waiting for this moment. When I lean to my left and fall over, though, that's when you're really going to laugh. My name's Adam Baugh, with E. Morris, 2525 East Arizona, Biltmore Circle. And last night, I was at Phoenix Estrella Village Planning Committee, and this is what happened to me. So hopefully you don't break my other leg, and I'll be able to make it home. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate what you do. And I know there's probably a lot of other things you'd rather do than to be here, hearing this case. But we're grateful for staff's participation, particularly in this one. We spent a lot of time working with both senior city staff, management office, down in Pine Department, really trying to find a good solution for this property and bringing in something that will be complementary to the area. So I'm here on behalf of both Howard Grace Companies and PB Bell. It's a joint development that they want to propose together. Howard Grace and Grace Companies owns the property right there at the corner of McDowell Road and Reams. And they've had a commercial plan there for some time, but they always figured that a commercial and the opportunity would extend a little further along McDowell Road. One of the challenges, though, is retail is tough to survive today. Particularly brick-and-mortar retail. The fact that you have Amazon, you can order online. The fact that you have Amazon, you can order online, it's at your house, and sometimes that same day, you can try it on for free, and if it doesn't fit you, you can mail it back. And it's really hard for retail shopping centers to compete in an online economy. So, you start to see a little bit of these transitional uses. What makes this as exciting is we actually have a development proposal that complements both the commercial, and we can bring residential next to it, so we sort of bake in our own customers to support the retail. Through staff's participation, they've encouraged us to provide cross-connectivity from the two developments, and that's sort of what we'll highlight here today. I have a very brief presentation. I'll click through it like this. The agricultural zoning is on the property today, but clearly, no one envisions agricultural long-term for this site. And so, what we looked at were some cues from the general plan. It talks about being business commerce and TOD overlay, and that these uses are allowed under that general plan category. Given that you're next to a freeway, these are the exact type of uses you'd expect to see next to a freeway. Rather than low, single-story, single-family homes, more of an intensity, an urban feel, commercial, those are what you'd expect to see along a freeway corridor. In particular, your land use and general plans refer to including high-density residential within these two types of general plan categories. So, as I mentioned here, the site is that area outlined in yellow. To the east is that Pebble Creek Village Marketplace. We refer to that as Phase 1, and we refer to this as sort of a Phase 2. Phase 1 is obviously further advanced, it has the Wincor and some of the grocery, the restaurant tenants moving forward and some other shop pads. So, we expect that we'll get a head start on here, but this will move forward quickly after that. Here's the site plan just directly to the east of us, so you can kind of get an idea of the intensity of what's planned for this area already. This is approved in 2014, but a number of leases have been signed, plans are in review with the city. So, I expect this will move forward very promptly. Given that that's ready to move forward, it's logical that we would be able to come forward with our next Phase 2. And this is what we're showing here. The reason why I have those areas highlighted in red is I want to point out a couple of things. We have a very large setback from McDowell Road, 126 feet. And typically, I think you'd, in any other circumstances in the city, you'd expect to see your businesses closer to the street, but there's some existing impacts there that we have to push it back. As a result, it sort of shifts our property further to the south, closer to the freeway. And that's why you see a little bit of a deviation for that request. We maintain our access off of 159th Avenue, and that's a critical component, because that's already an existing street. We don't want to add more curb cuts onto McDowell Road, which could have a possibility of slowing down traffic on McDowell Road. So, we're trying to use the existing transportation network that's already in place. As a result, we tried to make our units that are along our western edge have a little bit more of interaction with that street, and so someone walking on that street could walk directly into a unit or a guest. And so, whereas most of your apartment communities have fences around them, this actually has an opportunity for you to have a walk-up unit to some of those buildings there. We try to engage the street rather than turn our back to the street. And then, on the east side, you'll see that little area circled next to the commercial component. We provided a detached sidewalk that gives us a chance to put trees on each side of that, so you can create a shaded walkway at a little bit more mature growth to encourage pedestrian activity to and fro the commercial. We also provided a cross vehicular access point, so we're not just accessing off of 159th Avenue, but we encourage that activity with the retail next door. We feel like that retail will only succeed as long as we have residents next to it, and the ability to have that pedestrian and vehicular connectivity tying the two together should help propel that forward. In addition to our plan, we do include a little bit of carriage units on the south side that have some baked-in additional standards related to noise insulation, triple-pane window glazing, additional features in the construction, and an eight-foot little wall in between each carriage unit. The idea is to create a buffer from the freeway. What you can't see on here is we're still 100 feet. We have a 35-foot setback beyond our carriage unit, plus another 100 feet of space before you're even close to the freeway. So, it's really more like 135-foot distance from the freeway. Here's how it interrelates with the two projects combined, and you can see the divided line between the two of them. And then, I sort of went through that, so I'll just jump to the next one here. Here are some of the amenities that PB Bell has been successful with. Every PB Bell project is designed unique for that area. They never replicated any design two times, which we kind of like, because I think they have to design for the context of the area. We like that there's some multifamily right across the street, it makes it totally compatible, but we're right next to a transportation corridor, which is appropriate for this type of use. At the end of the day, we're grateful for staff support and for their efforts in guiding us to this process, and we're grateful that we haven't had any opposition either. So, it's always a nice thing to be able to come forward today. That being said, I haven't fallen over to my left, so I'll terminate before I do. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes.
I'm trying to follow this, but I'm very concerned about the traffic.
Okay.
Because you take this Wincor, I mean, that's a huge store with a lot of cars. And how many units are in this apartment? And so, can you take me back to the previous picture slide? Keep going.
This one?
Yes. So, there is a, there's a way to get in from McDowell?
No. The apartments are accessed from either 159th Avenue or from the commercial center to the east, but we don't have any direct access into there. And the commercial center is actually, you can see on the far eastern, northern, you know, the far northeast corner of that little site plan, that's an existing access easement that's jointly shared between the two commercial phases. So, we're not introducing a new access point onto McDowell Road.
Can you actually go back? Maybe this will, will help if you go back to, no, keep going back. There you go. Because you can kind of see there that the, there's, the main access to the apartments is right there in the center, which is to the left of the yellow line.
Correct.
And then, the only other access is to the, on the right side of the yellow line, basically. And the Wincor will sit to the right of the yellow line. I don't know if that helps you.
No, it does. I mean, I'm...
And then, there is, there will be an entrance on...
I just find it interesting that somebody would want to put an apartment building next to this marketplace, and it's not even a gated community, or it's not even a gated area. A lot of people, they'll, there would be, I don't know, I would think, well, who, you know, can they get? I would be concerned with security, I would be concerned with traffic, I would be concerned with, um... There's a lot of movement here.
Valid, so if it'd be okay, would you mind if I addressed some of your comments?
Sure.
Well, first of all, the way land planning works, it's actually preferable to have multifamily next to commercial areas because you're reducing trips. And that's a good thing, you're keeping cars off the road, and someone can walk and get their groceries or not. I guess it depends on what time of the year you'll be walking there. Or you can walk to the coffee shop or the bakery that's being planned on the property. So, by having that next to you, you're actually reducing trips. Secondly, when you think about what's compatible, it's generally preferable that multifamily be close to commercial centers rather than right next to single-family homes. Single-family residents tend to object, understandably. I don't know if all the reasons are legit, but it's a common complaint that you hear, "Don't put the apartments next to me. Put them next to the retail center." The third part is, we do have some security measures in place that see far what you'd expect, but this is a gated community. Boy, if I could point you in from 159th Avenue, when you drive in, that entry driveway is accessible, but when you want to turn left or right, that's where it's gated. And so, if you're gonna be a tenant here, you do have that extra security and measure. And the thing about PB Bell is, they have extreme measures regarding to screening of tenants. They have a program that they participate in in cooperation with the local police departments as well. It's an anti-crime program essentially, and they also have a chance to evaluate and screen out felons or those types of people who, when I, when you own a single-family home, like I did, and I had a renter in there, I just needed someone to pay my mortgage. I didn't do the background check, and unfortunately, I made a big mistake. Professionally managed companies like this can filter through those processes. We don't, I don't think create more traffic than you'd expect to see on this property. Given that it's between McDowell Road, a heavy-traveled arterial street, and the freeway, I don't think you're gonna see single-family homes be built on this side of the freeway. It's most likely to be an employment or a commercial use, and those tend to create more trips daily than an apartment. And finally, an apartment tends to have trips spread out for the day, whereas most of your single-family homes have a heavy trip in the morning and a heavy trip in the evening when they're going to and from work. Multifamily tends to be spread out the day, so it actually is a better opportunity for traffic than if you were other use.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Will there be garages offered on this property?
Yes. For example, the southern property units are carriage units, so those are garages below and units above.
Those are garages. Sorry.
And we have some other garages on the property as well. Yeah, they're...
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you making the trip. That being said, is there any speakers' cards? Anybody from the public like to address us on this issue? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass 18-210-00004.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to approve the Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Phase 2, 18-210-00004. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gen item 8.5, I will open the public hearing for the Citrus Farms rezone, and Alex will be presenting.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. The next item is the Citrus Farms rezone. The subject property is located east of Citrus Road, south of Campbell Avenue, which is the main Sedia entrance off of Citrus. You might recall from last month, the commissioner reviewed the rezoning for the surrounding property called Abel Ranch. So, to the northeast and to the south bit, you have the R-16 zoning that's part of the Abel Ranch neighborhood, and then the little bit of agricultural urban from that Abel Ranch community. And then, to the west, as I mentioned, is the Sedia community. So, once again, if you recall, the property was zoned planned area development under the Talavertia Estates PAD, allowing for residential development with lot sizes of 110 by 140. The red area, I tried to outline approximately where the subject property is for Citrus Farms. So, the request is to rezone the property from PAD to R-16, like we did with the Abel Ranch property. This is the conceptual development plan that the applicant provided and a comparison of the portion from the Talavertia Estates PAD to this request. So, in that original plan, there were about 70 lots planned within that portion, bringing the density to 1.59 dwelling units per acre, and a maximum number of lots for this project is set at 110. The Citrus Farms portion, bringing that Citrus Farms portion to 2.43 dwelling units per acre. And just like Abel Ranch, this property is located within Luke Air Force Base Noise Contour and includes density restrictions. Therefore, we have placed that stipulation, capping the number of units to 110 to meet Luke's, Luke Air Force Base's requirements, which the letter of support was included in your packet. Combined with the Abel Ranch property, the overall density of the area within the Noise Contour is 2.13 dwelling units per acre. And as shown on the screen, the development standards will follow the city's R-16 standards. On August 8, or August 9, excuse me, staff held a neighborhood meeting to discuss the project with the public. No one from the public attended this meeting, and staff has not received any additional inquiries to this date. To conclude, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the required codes and ordinances, and staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations in the ordinance included in your packets. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for a presentation or questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any questions for staff?
Nope.
You said the applicant is here?
The applicant is here.
Would you like to address the commission, or?
I have a presentation if necessary, but Alex did a great job, so if you have any questions, it's up to you.
We really appreciate you. Unless someone has a question for the applicant?
Nope.
None?
No.
Wow. You got it easy. Okay. With that, is there any speakers' cards? Anybody from the public? With that, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 18-200-00007.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve 18-200-0007, Citrus Farms rezone. With that, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Last item, well, on this, is 8.6, is, uh, this is the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 9.31, and Alex will be presenting on that as well.
Thank you, Chairman. This final request is from Newland for the preliminary plat, like you said, for parcel 9.31. It's located in the Montecito community. So, to the north are parcels 9.5 and 9.6, which are Terrada and Montecito Village neighborhoods. And to the south, we have Mountain Vista Drive. And then, if you go a little bit further south, that's Cantomea. So, whoops, did I miss a slide? I think I lost a slide in my presentation. Sorry about that. I had the zoning map for the Montecito area, which you had approved, I think, late last year. This area was originally zoned as a school site. With the rezone, it was designated as single-family detached with the 50-foot-wide lots. So, to the east, that eastern portion and to the south was rezoned to the same designation as this property. Newland had worked with the property owners to the north to establish a restriction of this parcel to single-story homes in keeping with the anticipated school site. So, a stipulation was included to maintain that restriction. This parcel does include 42, I was gonna go to this one, 42 single-family lots and five tracts with two main entry points, one off Mountain Vista Drive and the other off 182nd Drive. Tract A serves as the main open-space tract. The typical lot size for these lots are, is 65 feet by 125. The entry off Mountain Vista Drive will eventually serve the main drive to the future park site to the west of this site. This sheet shows the phasing, the current and proposed phasing of Mountain Vista Drive with the development of parcel 9.1, or 9.31, excuse me. The road will be built to the edge of South 184th Drive. The preliminary plat was reviewed against the city's requirements and found to be acceptable. Therefore, staff is recommending approval subject to stipulations in the staff report. However, staff and the applicant have discussed stipulation number three, which includes the development of the adjacent park site. Newland finds that the stipulated timing of the park is not feasible at this time and requested that the stipulation be removed. Staff internally reviewed the request with the Parks Department and has concluded that the development of the park may be postponed. We have determined in agreement with Newland that at the time that Mountain Vista Drive is extended, the parks, those improvement plans will include the plans for park, and it will be developed at that time. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the deletion of stipulation number three. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available for questions or comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any questions for Alex?
Just in regards to the park. Will it be moved, made smaller, or is it just being delayed?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner Kish. The park is not being changed, the size of the park is not being changed, it's the timing of development.
Mr. Steiner?
Could you tell me what the distance is between parcel 9.6, 9.5, and then the 9.31, I believe this is?
Yes. So, the, sorry, it's tiny writing on the screen. That distance is 89 feet, 89 and a half feet.
Okay. All right, good.
From 9.6. The smallest little pinch point is 82.6 feet.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I see the applicant in the audience. Would you like to address the commission? Any questions for Mr. Tyke?
No.
Perfect. Thank you, Alex. With that, I will take a motion on the gen item 8.6.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve number 8.6, 18-500-00010.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to approve the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 9.3, 18-500-00010.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject one second, excuse me. That is adopting also the deletion of stipulation number three. Is that correct? Yes.
That's in the staff report?
That's in the staff report, is that correct? Is that what your motion included?
Yes.
Yes. Including the stipulation of removing the...
Deleting the stipulation.
Stipulation.
Just for the record, thank you.
For the record. You got that, Heather? Perfect. Motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Takes us to item number nine, staff communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items run through with you. As you always know, we give you an update on council actions based on the... know, we give you an update on council actions based on the, the applications that you have also rendered an opinion on. So I have several here to run through. All of these actions were taking, took place, excuse me, at the council meeting that was held on August twentieth. So you may remember the stipulation modification for the KCI property, which is the property just immediately to our west here. That was approved by the council. The Abel Ranch rezone, which Alex alluded to during her presentation tonight for Citrus Farms, sort of the larger piece there that this piece that you considered tonight kind of fit within, that was also likewise approved by the city council on August twentieth.
Did they get the same enjoyment out of that one as we did?
Uh, actually, there were no public speakers at that meeting. So, um, the, the speakers that we had at the planning commission meeting did not attend the city council meeting.
Good.
Uh, Cantomea Phase Three pre-plat, which was just to adjust some of the, the lot, lot lines in a portion, a new portion of Cantomea, was also likewise approved by council on the twentieth of August. Pebble Creek Unit Forty-nine was approved. The use permit for Philiberto's Drive-Thru was also approved on the twentieth. Paseo Place Final Plat for Parcel Two was approved on the twentieth, and also the Final Plat for Australia Parcel eleven dot A-two, which was in the Lucero community of, of Australia, was also approved on the twentieth. So that's a kind of the recap, if you will, of council actions. Exciting news for you, if you remember, we, we highlighted for you that we are going to be deploying iPads for the commission in an effort to improve our communication and reduce, gain some efficiencies and do some cost savings as well with all of our paper. We are, we've got confirmation from the IT department that we will be deploying those to you all on September twenty-fifth at our special meeting, so that is the incentive to come to that meeting, if you will.
[laughing]
During that time, we will also kind of do a little refresher of the city's ethics codes and requirements for use of electronic devices, just so everybody's aware of the dos and do-nots of utilizing this device. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to say thank you for your service to all of you, and thank you for cooperation in hosting a special meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that and the update. My request would be, just for some of us, probably mostly me, but Heather or someone from staff, would you be able to send a reminder on the twenty-first and the morning of the twenty-fifth? Just cause it's a Tuesday and it's, it's, it's off schedule, and I just want to make sure that, I know that we're like, we're sitting right at quorum, and so I, I want to make sure that, you know, we don't let down our clients. So if you'll do that, I would greatly appreciate it. So, um, with that, any other comments?
I, I got a question for you, Christopher. And this is just curious. What is our plan to expand Bullard Avenue, south of Van Buren and north of Yuma?
Uh, yes, sir. So that road is included in the transportation master plan already for improvements. It was, it's going to be widened and improved with the, with, I believe, with the median as well. As you may know, there are various developments, proposals that are kind of in process, some of which may need some action from you, and some of which do not. So we are currently working with our colleagues in the engineering department and our private sector development partners in order to time the improvements of that roadway all the way from Yuma to Van Buren. Ultimately, it is going to be improved. We are not in favor of scalloped streets, which is where you have a wide one and then a narrow section, and a wide one and a narrow section. So we're working with all these partners in order to, to best accommodate their needs and also construct it hopefully all at one time.
Yeah, I, I, with everything being rezoned to light industrial, you know, you're gonna definitely have to have the road expanded in order to accommodate semis, the cars, whatever else.
Sure. Yes, sir. And in conjunction with that, with those property developments there, there, those, they have frontage on Yuma as well, so there'll be some improvements at the Yuma intersection. That is a string-light condition right now, so that would also be improved with the, the city's standard traffic signal installations.
Very good. Thank you.
So there, there's, I think, if you were to leave town for now, Mr. Commissioner, and come back in a couple of years, I think Bullard and Yuma would look drastically different. Not that I'm suggesting I want you to leave town much, but just in case you do.
Is that where Microsoft is gonna be, down there?
Um, we don't know about any project named Microsoft. Um, there was a, a large closing of property that was south of MC eighty-five.
Oh.
That means, and now you have to figure out what that code name is they use on the inside.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Perfect. With that, meeting adjourned.
Yeah.